Call the meeting to order. Looks like we are all present and accounted for. Folks, if you would stand face the flag so inclined while we say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before approval, we're gonna move some things around. Jake was gonna give, as a scheduled presenter, was gonna give some conversation about facility rental. He is umpiring right now, and so we'll just have him fill in when he gets here.
Is he still coming?
He's hoping to, but see how that goes.
You heard the other, huh? And under new business number one, we don't have enough information on the pickleball conversation at this point in time, so we're gonna delay that for a future meeting. And number five, MS High School Handbook, if we could please, could we move that up to number one item? So in place of that pickleball conversation? I think that's all I have.
That's the changes, that's right.
Okay. Subject to that, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Second by Jerry. Other discussion.
I was wondering, Bob, is it possible to bring up, just we had that conversation last time with Beth when she kinda approached the board, about just conditional use of, you know, spring sports in the fieldhouse and in the gym. Seems like we just kinda left it, kinda not knowing what to do, and I wonder if we could continue with that conversation a little bit?
Yeah, we can.
Discussion item.
Discussion item, can we move it to seven?
Sure.
On the new biz. Which should we entitle that?
Indoor ball usage.
Sure.
I'd really like Jake to be in, so hopefully by then he'll be.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Brenda, is that okay with your motion to add that?
Um, yes. I'm in my motion as a band.
Jerry?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor of the amended motions on the agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Kerry. Okay, housing initiative, schoolhouse building project, Walt and members of the initiative.
Hi.
There were supposed to be more here tonight.
So good to see you. Are you carrying the banner?
I didn't know you called him Walt. Who's this Walt guy? He's not in our group. I guess I'm the one to do this for whatever reason, and I'm glad they did it. The board said, well, why don't you do the presentation since you're kind of the senior member of the board in more ways than one. I'm almost as old as Rob. So I'm really very, very happy to be able to do this because I've been involved with this thing from the very beginning, and I think, for me anyway, it's been one of the highlights of my life, being able to be connected with this thing because it's really, really a good program. And you got, you got something from Superintendent Geese that I sent, which I called Our Success Story, which I wrote in 2006, back in what I termed the bad old days. When we didn't have any money, and we had to go out and do a lot of begging. So I wrote this thing and we dragged it around and went to see, we went to see the people at the casino, and we went to United Way, and we went to businesses around town, we went to churches around town. We really were scrambling trying to come up with money. And as time went on, things seemed to get better. I think the thing that, the piece of paper that you guys got, the email that you guys got,
It's also my.
Got through the second house. I've got helpers here. Second house, we got through the second house. And the third house, we decided to kind of go astray from our mission statement a little bit and try to build one where we can make a little profit so we have something to work with, which we did, and we sold the third one for not a big profit, but enough to kind of keep us going. And from that point on, each year, we kept going, and we're on house number 13 now. And I think we've done lots, I shouldn't, but when I say we, all of us, I think we've done a really, really good thing here. We not only have provided, I don't know how to term it, low-income housing, I guess is, you know, people that can't afford a great big house, they can afford the houses that we are building. And it's just worked marvelously well. At one point about, was, yeah, before we built house number one, we kind of sat around and well, how do we, this goes way back, how do we get this thing started? And somewhere along the line, we thought, well, let's try to get school kids to build houses, which was kind of a dopey idea, but we were doing it in Randolph, and it seemed to be working. And Randolph did a knockoff of Sambroda, I believe, or Pine Island way back in the olden days when Ron Dastardle was our industrial arts teacher. We didn't have, we were running out of kids for him to teach, and he was a great teacher. So he came along one day, we'll build houses, and we rolled our eyes and finally said, well, okay, try it. He did, and you guys did, and it's thriving, and we have money in the bank, and it's just been a good thing. So, let's see, da-da-da. I think we did well enough at one point in time to actually, to save the program sort of. When we had low enrollment, we gave the district
$10,000.
$10,000? $10,000. So obviously, it's not like the bad old days, things are going well. Our current board, we've got really, we've, we have, and we have had just really, really good people on this board. They're just amazing people, I think. Right now, we have Joni Adams, Kathy Anderson, me, there are some exceptions to good people, Dan Boykin, Dennis Brecken, Beth Geese, Dave Maroney, Molly Schneider, and Greg Wolf. And until just recently, Bob Banks and Denny Kelo were on the board. Just great, great people. If we go back to the very beginning, you'll hear names you probably haven't heard for a long time. Well, Chuck Jacobson, of course, everybody knows him, Todd Sessler, everybody knows, Dave Vaughn, Dottie Hammer, who now lives in Northfield, Mike Bateson, Mike O'Gial, Bill Callister, and me, we were, I think we were the original board, I'm not sure. Bill Callister might have been on the first board. But we've gone through a lot of people, Glenn Christian, Russ Clevinger, Sherri Newis, I mentioned Bob Banks, Carol Lefingwell, Denise Anderson, Denny Kelo, Gary Titistall, Lynn Berg was on our board for a while, Pat Senjam, names that should be familiar to you, most of them. So anyway, we just wanna thank you for the support you've given us. Without the board's support, obviously, this wouldn't have worked, and we appreciate it very much because it's just a fun thing to do, to get houses built, and to see these kids out there working. And especially fun to see Walt making these kids, or teaching these kids, making these kids learn stuff. And I think it's worked, so.
See, Jim, I think one of the things you forgot is that at our last meeting, we talked about 14 of the last 16 houses have had students move into our district. And so we think that's a pretty big deal. Like Dave Maroney said, there's only two housing permits right now in Cannon Falls, and one of them is always the schoolhouse, and we're pretty excited about that. So it's kinda neat to hear that, I think it's first-time buyers, I think it's low-income buyers, I think there's a lot of people looking for that kind of house, but to have 14 of the families so hard have children, now they may go on and sell the home, and that's fine too, there's no problem with that, but we are bringing kids into the district, so we thank you for that too. It's a big deal.
I just wrote the minutes today, and I didn't put that in, I'd better change them.
We were just talking about, more of a side conversation.
Anyway, I'm just guessing, it would be an interesting exercise sometimes to, sometime to just add up the total amount of the houses that we've sold, but I think we're $2 million, do you think?
Probably $16,000.
I think we're right up there. I think, I have to say this without getting emotional, but without Mark, this wouldn't work. He's, well, I'm telling the truth. I don't lie all the time. He is, he's just been phenomenal. I can't say enough good things about him. I've never, at any meeting, seen somebody ask him if he could do something, or heard him say, no, I can't do it, it's always either I can do it, it might be hard, but I'll try. He gets stuff done, and kids love him, and we love him, and I just wish we could clone him. About 50 Mark Walters around here. Wait a minute. I'll back off on that a little bit, water more. So anyway, thank you, thank you so much for all you have done for us, and we hope we'll be able to continue this for a long, long time. Forever.
And like I said at our last meeting, we do have a great number again this next semester. Mark and I were talking a little bit about that today too. So even though some of those years we have slumps, I think it's so important to keep this program because we know that the following year, there could be 20-some kids that want it, so.
Well, we're over, aren't we, command?
Yeah, we're gonna do three sections of it again next year.
Oh, yeah, oh, three sections, oh.
So Mark's there.
Okay.
Okay, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Walt, when you first, when you first started here, you, with this project, you were reaching out to some friends and others in the trades for some assistance and some guidance, how has that changed?
I've got a really awesome crew, I mean, from interstate, all the local contractors in town would help, or, you know, give you answers, whatever. And we've got all our subs, head to our concrete and our electrical, and all that stuff's always been just phenomenal with kids and whatnot, so. We do everything local, everything's from Cannon Falls, appliances, everything, you know, materials.
Typically, what does your day look like? You load up for a two-hour stretch, a 50-minute stretch?
Yeah, usually, bell rings at 8:00, take roll, take off, come back after a second hour, kids change and get ready for the next load, and away you go, day after day, so.
Well, it is a two-way street, as far as thanking us, thank you for the coordination of this through the years. Without the initiative, this would have fallen apart years ago, I'm sure.
It's been fun.
Got started. It's been fun.
Mark, what's the continuity with all that? When you have someone come in, let's say, for the footings and the blockwork, and you do your capping and framing, how does that play out with the students as they progress through the program?
Well, you know, after about two or three years, when I, you know, would get the same contractors, so they would try and work with, you know, show up, they usually do a lot of the stuff on Fridays because, you know, they're, they would take our job every year, but a lot of times, we were on the back burner a little bit sometimes, you know, just because they're giving us a good deal, and they spend time with the kids and explain how everything works. And we get the help a little bit during the school hours, but sometimes they have to show up on Saturdays or after hours or whatever, but.
So let's say they don't, you know, you can only go so fast with the house, then how, do they also get exposure to plumbing, electrical through the whole year? Is that how that takes place?
Yeah, so, like, this particular house, we did a two-year project because we didn't have three sections of it, you know, both semesters, and it was, the kids just, we went slower this year, and the kids got to do a lot more, you know, we got to take our time with stuff, and the kids got missed out on the, like, the footings and blockwork and framing. Well, when they started this school year, all that was still exposed on the inside of the house. Everything was still exposed, so you could start basically from, you know, right, and they could see the footings and the drain tile and the whole works. So they got to see everything, how it's wired, how they, how all the plumbing ties in, they get to see us tie into the street, and they get the, the surveyor shows up, we're always there the day he comes and surveys a lot, and shows us his equipment, and everything, so. We try and cover everything, we usually wait to start digging the hole right until, right until school starts so that they get in on, you know, the first scoop coming out of the ground, so. It's been good, so, anyway.
Thank you. Thanks to both of you. Okay, moving forward. Reports and communication, this is the off, off meeting for the student reps. Any board committee reports, any meetings that you've been to in the last, since we met?
Tech committee, we went to re-tech if that wouldn't do more account. But actually, for the first time, I've already canceled, we have a forum.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so that's rescheduled for the, when's that?
The May, Sep, no, May, I have to check.
Yeah, it's okay, first, so. And actually, I should check to see, is this on the agenda as far as the fire project, that's later off, that's number six, we'll leave that alone. We'll talk about it when we get to that item.
Okay. Anyone else? How about you, Brenda?
The foundation had their auction last Saturday night, and it was a very successful event. I think it was probably the best, or not, I've seen a really lot of people there. And the robotics team had a demo with the bomb bots was there, doing some stunts out on the patio. Then there was a special auction for a steam lab to raise money for that. Amy gave a presentation, so I think it was real, I haven't heard any numbers as to, you know, how much they raised, but I know, I think it was very successful.
We don't have the final numbers, they'll be probably out tomorrow morning, or the last few-minute things that they were still adding up today.
So, yeah, thanks to all the community and everyone who contributed and staff.
Good time, always a good time.
Well, actually, we can talk about the rest of the tech meeting, this part can stay till number six.
Yes, yeah.
So tech did meet, and we had the whole crew there talking about wrapping up this year, devices for next year, some of the changes that we're going through as far as types of devices, the ever-loving denews will be done this year, so that won't be in our inventory anymore. We'll continue to lease. We're finding some better product and pricing. You know, it is fine, we spent a lot of money on tech, and I think a lot of what we're talking about at this last meeting was how it interacts better with the curriculum, because, you know, we've got people from the different committees there, which is nice. But a lot of the focus, I thought, this last meeting was really on how tech works with everything, and how technology is gonna be utilized with teachers, what are their expectations, and then we touched a little bit on the administration's expectations as well, as far as the technology going forward. I love the meeting, it was, I'm happy where we're going with technology as a whole. We're spending a lot of money, but I think we're gonna, we're gonna focus on it even more than we already have been, which I think with the board would want, with the money that we're spending on it. And we've got the bid project coming up as well, I don't know, Kurt, if you wanted to add to it?
No, that pretty much sums it up, I think, really, overall, I mean, just basically said, you know, going forward, the monies that's gonna be going into it, just holding people accountable and making sure we're getting the best, best bang for the buck, really.
And you do think your conversation about the curriculum and the technology has really made us very thoughtful when we're looking at purchases and things? Even though it was really hard to kind of lay it out on paper, I think it's really made the thought process and all of that kind of more streamlined? Is that a good way to explain it, Amy? I just think we've been, it's been good.
It's good to be mindful about how we spend any dollars, and now that we've invested so much in the hardware, you know, maybe we can rethink the way software, programs, or other things that we back for curriculum, let's look at what we're doing, and are we getting the results that we want? Which ultimately, technology is a tool to help support learning, to help students be successful and achieve, and be prepared for when they leave this place, and they go out into the real world, so, yeah.
Amy seems to be very well-versed in all this, and people on the tech, on the tech committee and stuff, it's been a real asset, so it's been really nice.
So does curriculum and tech meet?
They didn't, we didn't.
It's not officially curriculum that's there, but we have, you know, with Amy, what we liked is with Amy being there from staff development when I was back on it, and with curriculum, she does represent, bring a little bit of everything right to the table, which is nice, plus we've got good representation from elementary school up. And then we've got the tech team there as well, which, it's a really good committee that covers all the areas, I think. There's no one that's left out of it, from elementary school to the tech team, to the high school, to administration, so. And I know that the, iPad minis are going, is that going away everywhere?
Yep.
They're just gonna stop.
Yeah, I wanna talk about how technology changes on a, on the fly. We met in February, and in the month of March, the iPad minis, which is our device at elementary school, are no longer gonna be produced, so we're gonna have to get iPads, which are gonna be a little bit more money, but we're going to be selling back the iPad minis, getting some money back for that. So it kind of ends up you to watch, but that's how fast tech changes. You're planning, we're like, oh, good, we might have a little bit of wiggle room in our budget, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna find out that we're gonna maybe have to spend a little bit more than what we thought, and I would say that was a three-week shift in thinking, so, but but we can make it work, we're thinking that through, so.
Certainly has been a newfound focus on technology, and it's really in your direction and tech committee in general, so it's been really good to know what's going on.
Yeah.
They do a good job, right?
And something we've talked a little bit about, skirt, you know, we've got more tech that we really haven't incorporated really in, which is like the CNC machine 3D version stuff, that's all technology as well, but we're really focused on the one-to-one, and I don't know, at one point, now we'll probably have to come in as part of the curriculum and technology support. We've got some great devices here that technology we've still gonna talk about. So it's gonna get a little bit broader on what technology means to the district as we go forward.
Well, we're informed. Anyone else for committee?
Just before I move on, I forgot to say thank you to the Ed Foundation for all the hard work they put into the election. Not just the community and everyone else pretending, but the foundation really puts a lot of effort into that, and all of their contributions.
Lot of work for them.
Yeah.
Lot of work. Okay, public input. Anyone in the audience have anything that they wish to speak for or about concerning school? Moving on. Consideration to approve the finance report, we don't have our finance person here.
That's all right, Ethan, we're gonna go ahead and cover it. I've also put it up on the screen, I think you have it in your packet. Not really much excitement on here, it's that time of year, we'll be getting some revised budgets and final budgets here in May and June. Some things to point out is that, you know, our end energy, money and income is gonna be coming in in late May, you can see that back way down the sheet. You'll also see something you voted on, the 2015 A bonds. You'll see our first expense, I guess it would be on June 1st, that'll be coming. Another, another good one to look at. So that's the main cash flow worksheet, if anyone have any specifics on that, I can certainly help you out with that. The second part that Josh has in here is the next part, if you have any questions on that, we can go with it as well. There really isn't much in there that is changed in any way.
The manuals, what was that, those are just new books and stuff like that?
Yep, that's all your, everything that we go into. And that's a monthly, every month.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion. All in favor of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Let's page the consent agenda. Item under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, we can remove it for separate action.
I saw some of you looking ahead at the monthly bills, so if you have some in there, I can certainly answer those as well.
Look at 48735.
I'm sorry, say the number again.
48735. The first page, 5,025 proceeding services.
Jennifer Somernus, Dr. Somernus is a consultant through special education. We are, unfortunately, it was given a seven-month bill, we asked her to bill us monthly. So, yes, that is her entire services for the entire year. We, we won't have our services anymore, but we needed it at the time.
This looked large for a.
It is, and, you know, I, Lori knows as well, I asked her to please bill us monthly, and kind of kept, that bill kept growing and growing, so I apologize for that, but that is a seven-month bill.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion by Rob. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. No old business carried forward, so under new business, moving up, consideration to approve the 1718 middle school, high school handbook, wants to carry that.
There are no changes that I made to the handbook this year. We did an extensive rewrite last year where we changed a lot of things, but there was nothing other than a typo or two that was changed from, will be changed from this year's handbook to next year's handbook. Unless somebody finds one, I'll take that.
Anyone have any other questions, Mr. Hodges?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the 1718 middle school, high school handbook, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Item two, consideration to approve the amended school calendar for 1718.
Okay, I know you feel like you voted on the calendar, which you did. We had a little glitch in there as far as conference days go, and how we were comping our teachers out for those conference, those conference days, and so what you see before you, I think, is a kind of a win-win. I heard the board say, we're fine with the spring break, but we really don't like them going so far into the summer. Because of where Labor Day falls, and those two days that we were able to move around, well, for conferences, the two comp days, we are able to have our kids graduate on June 1st instead of June 8th, and I think our community will like that a little bit better. I also think that our elementary teachers especially really like and need a spring break. Some of the differences you'll see in the first one, we did take out some of the intermittent teacher workshop days because those need to go out to the conferences instead. The other change that you will see is on August 28th, that is no longer colored red, that won't be a teacher workshop day. Many years, well, for many, many years, we've always had three days. We added that fourth day on when we needed a GCPD special education day, we don't need that anymore. So admin and the teachers met, and we feel very comfortable with this. We would like to get this out because we have the other calendar out, so we'd like to make the changes so people know. It would be my recommendation to go ahead and approve the amended calendar.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion is by Brenda, seconded is by Katie. Other discussion.
Grant's side.
Oh, he'll be.
It's a senior here.
All in favor of the amended calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Just in time. Consideration to approve the 1718 list of fundraisers. Jake?
Yep, mostly the same, there's a couple highlighted, I did give you an update, and she's there with a couple highlighted. One was softball, and the other one was a new one for the athletic trainer. She'd like to be able to run a fundraiser where she would sell Gatorade products out of her office, sports shakes, sports chews, stuff like that, protein bars, and, you know, so she'd have a little money to purchase some things, some equipment supplies that she needs, or she feels she can help do a better job, doing her job. The softball one is adrenaline fundraising, he doesn't know exactly what he's gonna do yet, that's, we do quite a bit of stuff through them, so I think mostly any of our sales stuff, except for selling cookie dough or pizzas, it usually comes through adrenaline fundraising. It's kind of a new one because of the previous arrangement where the softball coach and the girls' basketball coach are the same person, they kind of just rotated back and forth on which sport was gonna do it. Now we have two different coaches, and so girls' basketball's got one on there from last year, softball is adding one as well, so that one is kind of a new one. Otherwise, it's mostly the same stuff.
Why do some have more than others? I was asked that today, and I really didn't know how to answer it, is it a total dollar amount, or?
No, I don't, I just think that they've added them over the years, and they've continued to do it, and, you know, as long as they keep getting approval, I think they just keep putting them on there. I think some of them, like, I think some of them, like, well, humanities is a big one because they have such a large amount that they're trying to get to, and I know, what was the government class that would always, they always fundraise a bunch of things. Yeah, We the People would do a lot, so. It kind of seems, you know, most of our sports and activities have the one or the two, and then it kind of seems like the ones with the big fundraising items, big target goals, they have multiple, just to reach that goal. And I think maybe they're smaller, you know, they don't make as much per thing, so then they have to do a couple just to get to that target.
This is, it's always been kind of a conflict for me in that some of these items, I'll throw out the alumni golf tournament, car wash, they don't go directly into the community. It's anyone who wants to take part can come in. But when we, when we talk about the number of door-to-door sales, it doesn't seem to get any smaller, it seems to expand. And maybe I'm the only one who feels that way, but when, when you start adding the, the groups not directly aligned with the school, but still have school-age kids selling cookies and selling other things, you can get hit fifteen or twenty times in a year. And I don't know, I haven't heard anything directly from the community, but just as a businessperson, when they stop in all the time, you know, this was just yesterday, somebody else came in. And I just wonder if there's any, when we got away from the bomber boosters, that added a lot more to our community. And originally, we tried to get away from that, so it's almost like we're one eighty and back to where we were. And is that a conflict for anyone? Do we, do we set a cap? At one time, we had a cap for fundraisers, we were only gonna allow this many, and, but now when we got, we got people that help us, Ed Foundation, PTL, and, you know, they're having multiple ones each, and, you know, that goes directly into us. And, you know, so, I'm just not sure how anybody else feels about it. I just wanted to throw it out there.
You know, I guess I've always wondered if this is ever a complete list. I feel like it grows, but at the same time, I don't know if the activities are growing, it's just we start adding more of what we actually do onto the list or approve. I mean, I'm looking at boys' basketball, and I don't know what fundraisers, but when they do the basketball tosser at halftime of the games, is that a fundraiser? They give away the two-liter sodas and that, you know, not on here, so I don't know, is that really a fundraiser, just an activity? You know, does it show up in two years and we go, oh, it's a new one?
We've got it done at the bottom, boys' basketball, it's their tournament and the camp workers.
Well, that was, that one that you referred to is actually Merchants Bank. They did, they just wanted to do something fun. Merchants Bank didn't take anything. They asked us, and Beth and I worked together, and we said, yeah.
We've been pretty strict, we tell them, if it's not on here, we've told a couple groups, no, you know, we're really keeping it at this. The only exception we've ever made is when we come back to you, like We the People, or, you know, we don't know how well they're gonna do or something that year.
There are some things on there, though, that weren't initially on, over the, over the years, you know, for example, boys' basketball is an example that, you know, they work at the turn, the youth tournaments that CFY puts on, kind of, you know, they're definitely not hitting up the community, they're just, you know, they're serving the community, they're working the scores table and taking tickets and stuff like that. That hasn't always been on there. Concessions is kind of another one, if, I think some groups haven't put it on there. I send it to all the coaches and advisors, I tell them, send me all their fundraisers, and, you know, this is what I get. And sometimes I get questions like, do you think I should include concessions? And should I include working at a tournament? And that's why that list has grown.
How about the coordination of events so that they're staggered throughout the years and maybe not everybody gets hit in October, for example?
Yeah.
How do you handle that?
Yeah, you know, we do have that, the month that we run it for some of those anyways. And any new fundraiser, I do try to discourage them from sales, you know, I don't tell them no, but I try to discourage them, I say, it's gonna go over better with the community and with the school board for sure. If you don't do door-to-door sales, yeah, the adrenaline fundraiser will be a door-to-door sales product, so, you know, we kind of, we try to put that, the time of the year that they run it on there, because probably half of them are empty, so it's not something I actually keep that close of an eye on.
There's two silent auctions, and they're not very far apart, but it doesn't seem like they serve, they serve different people. I know that Ed Foundation might get a little nervous if there's one near them, but it's very evident it didn't have any impact on them at all. And I just wonder how we, how we handle things like that.
Should that be on here as a fundraiser, though?
It's part of their carnival.
I personally think that should be on there, because I would, I wanted to know on that, I mean, I knew about it.
About what?
A silent auction.
At the carnival?
Mm-hmm.
It would be under PTL.
And I know people are nervous for Ed Foundation because they're a few weeks apart, not even two weeks apart.
Again, the concern you might have seems to be alleviated, I guess, but when you see the attendance at the Ed Foundation, I think there are different groups come into that. Any input from you, Derek, on that?
I would echo that exact same thing, but as PTL, we are, you know, I've been in contact with the foundation and PTL, and, you know, we're not, we're not trying to compete, we actually didn't realize it until, I don't know, maybe one of the teachers brought it up recently about, you know, having to do two-in-one. Some of the teachers actually like it because they're kind of doing it one time a year, they just do two, two different things. But we're working with it. At our next meeting, we're actually gonna discuss the idea of moving the carnival because we're actually taking mini golf off. Looks like it didn't quite get updated since it got sent out, but we're gonna move the, well, we're gonna discuss the idea of moving the carnival to closer to where mini golf was, because we're gonna get rid of mini golf as a fundraiser. And also, we're gonna continue with the fun run next year, at least one more year, and that'll be in the fall, whole coming week, so.
That was a really big success.
Yeah, we didn't realize how successful it was gonna be and how much fun the kids and the parents had with that, so.
Golf, we just bring.
Those are two that are actually part of that that didn't get updated on there, so.
Not to grab it out of them, but calendars for dance, are they still doing that?
Yeah.
How about as we go forward with this, then, where some are doing more than others, where do you just put a limit on it then? You know, for others that say, you know, we only have one, but they have this many, do we continue to go forward with those sorts of things? Or do you say, look, if for anyone that wants to do something different or add one, they have to drop one? Where do you control it from here on out?
We, Jake and I have started this, is if someone wants to add one, they need to find a group that's willing to give up one, so that this, this total number never moves, right, Jake?
No.
But they would have to kind of, say they were a brand-new organization or someone that doesn't have anything under here, we would talk to one of the other groups and see if they'd be willing to give up one. We haven't done anything further than that, and I don't know how you do that either. Do you go in and say, you know, some schools say you have to have the, you have to designate what the money is exactly going for. You're raising it for this. That can be hard to do because you don't know if you're going to raise what you need or not. You know, Christmas tree sales are always kind of sporadic. Do you need to do those sales on the year that there's not a trip? Well, people have come to kind of expect, hey, I buy my Christmas tree downtown, where are the Christmas trees? You know, if we did the trees every other year, sometimes people want that. The fruit sales, I mean, there are people that look forward to the FFA fruit sales. If you stop doing something like that, I think we, you know, we'd be in trouble too.
Can you, can you say, though, can you say, look, let's say FFA wants to bring something else on, they wanna have two, and then you say, well, you can't unless somebody wants to give it up, is that?
That's what we've done so far.
But what if they don't want to give it up, then?
They can't do another one.
Does that, I guess, in all fairness, is that correct? Is, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You know, it just doesn't seem fair if that was the case, but.
I think, like, a couple examples, I think, thinking back to the fall, the Spanish trip was gonna do the Culvers thing, you know, and it didn't go over very well, so they came back and asked another one, and it got approved because we want to help them, and I think that's how those kind of snowballed and all of a sudden grew from one to two to three to four. So, over the last couple of years, I know there's been a couple that have been taken off, like the school newspaper where they don't, they had advertisements, they don't do that. And the We the People was taken off in the last year, so, there have been a few that have come off, but.
Kind of deal with it as it comes up.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at, you got Girl Scout, but Boy Scout's not on here, so if they need a fundraiser, someone's gonna have to give to get it.
I know a lot of the coaches, and Jake kind of encourages this, is to have them do camps and things like that, work through community ed. A lot of parents would much rather have a three-day camp in the summer, free daycare, you know, I mean, it's, you're providing a service versus buying something.
Yep, right.
And so, I know most of the new ones you've ever seen, well, the car wash would be the exception, but even the girls want to do that soccer camp, things like that. I know, well, that's Jake's idea, he deserves a cut on that. You've really encouraged them to try to do more camp-type things to keep our kids busy in the summer. Plus, you can run it right through community ed, makes it a win for everybody, you know.
When you look at things like the band boosters, for example, I mean, they've got four or five things here, none of them appear to be direct sales of anything. And so, when they come in, do we just say, you know, as long as it's, it doesn't interfere or double up somebody else's fundraiser? Nothing seems to be heard from me.
Direct sales type fundraisers, like the?
You sure can, I mean, that's why I would bring this to you.
Like, I mean, maybe if you're already encouraging services, I mean, that's, that's great. And, I don't know, because that's, you know, and as a parent, too, when you have kids coming home and you've got three kids in the same, that, you know, you have three kids in basketball, and you're like, you all have to sell twenty? You know, it gets to, or whatever it could be, you're like, okay, let's go do this, you know? You know, for sales, it's tough, but I'd much rather have them know that they have to, like, for instance, Bennett worked a whole, I think he'd worked a whole day for the youth tournament. I would much rather, okay, we know we have to work that weekend, so we're home. I love that, so, I definitely think maybe I would feel more comfortable limiting the sales.
I think if you look over time, this, it has gotten better and better all the time. And Jake has done a nice job of, if anyone wants to bring them, they have to bring it to the school board. I mean, that's the only, he can't approve it without bringing it here, and a lot of it has turned over to service versus that door-to-door stuff, because we know the things that aren't on here, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, you know, the things we don't control, they are selling. And so, we've tried to limit it, and it actually has gone down, believe it or not, the door-to-door stuff. We're doing the best we can.
The list is substantially shorter than.
We, we, well, we're trying to clean it up.
What'd you say, Brenda? This list is substantially shorter than when I first got in school?
Yeah, not that many of them are actually sales, a lot of them are just services and events and things like that.
I do have a question on, say, athletic trainer. As she fundraises for equipment, is that equipment to stay here or is she gonna be taking that elsewhere as she covers other districts? I think it would have, I think it would be, we'd have to run it through school accounting, you know, through Josh, so it would be property of the school, so I would make sure that that would be the case, yeah.
And would those products be for the kids to buy?
Yep.
Like, during events and?
Yeah, her idea would be have a refrigerator or cooler in her office, and if a kid wants a protein shake before practice, they can give her a dollar, and she can give them one and stuff like that.
And Gatorade has continually, every year, given us about $1,200. They've been really good.
About Powerade.
Powerade, sorry.
But, but, but that's how this came up, that's how this Gatorade came up, because Gatorade has approached Beth about this, a nice package they can put together and get new coolers and give us some product, and as long as we buy what she, basically what she normally buys, she'd, they'd be willing to get us this extra product too, so, they'd get her a cooler and all that stuff, so, that's how it came up.
What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the list of fundraisers.
Motion by Kurt in its entirety, right?
Yep.
Motion by Kurt, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Approving seventeen eighteen list of fundraisers as shown. Anything else?
The only, what would be interesting that we talked a little bit about, it would be the sales versus service where the door knocking, would there be a way that, because some of the stuff looks like it would be, but it might not be. Some of it might not, might not look like it, but could be that, not like what Katie was saying about keeping track of that specifically, so maybe next year we get this, we've got a category of direct sales and then whether it be sales not going out, but sales like with athletic trainer, you're selling property, not going out.
Jake, you could just do two columns.
Yeah.
But that, yeah, that athletic trainer wouldn't be going out and selling to the community, it's just helping the kids have it available too.
So, it wouldn't fit into that top category, but I think, I think what I hear is those direct sales are the ones that we're more concerned with, the door knocking and going out to the people all the time, so maybe for next year, add that category.
I could get that month updated too, get everybody's time of the year that they're gonna do it.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Closing discussion, all in favor of the seventeen eighteen list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. It's good discussion. Consideration to approve the seventeen eighteen elementary handbook. Eric?
Uh, yeah, I was looking through it because Terry and I really go through it, and she makes all the changes. Really, it's all, it's pretty minor, there's a couple times that we got the prices, a couple wording.
Are they marked in here, Derek, at all or?
No, no, they're not. It's all really minor, we, you know, we added, you know, Katie Lockner, we thought it'd be appropriate to put her on there as a school number. That was the biggest change.
Did you put your phone number on there?
Yeah. There's nothing really.
Okay.
You want it?
Yeah, I would just request going forward if we could see a marked copy so we know what the changes are, that's helpful.
Okay. Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll forget.
Jerry made the motion. Katie made the second to approve the seventeen eighteen elementary handbook. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carry. Consideration to approve the technology wiring project for fiscal year eighteen. Jamie?
Yeah, I can speak too.
We got the, well, and there's two parts to the project. One is gonna be for the cabling, one is for the access points. Access points, of course, is where people can access the internet. And we've got what's called E-rate, which I think you have, everyone's heard of before, where you apply for a discount, it actually works in reverse, you go out, get it, after you've paid for it, you get money back. The gross pro, project for both of these was just under eighty-two thousand. So, you have fifty-nine thousand for the cabling and twenty-two thousand for the access points to be put in. After the sixty percent E rebate, we're actually gonna pay thirty-two thousand. Now, we'll pay originally the eighty-one nine nine six, but then about six, eight weeks later, we'll get back forty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-seven. So, I guess what I would say is we're approving thirty-two thousand seven ninety-eight for the project, though it will initially cost almost eighty thousand.
And on top of that, the people doing the installation are willing to postdate their bills to kind of make things align better for you.
Yeah.
And when we did get the rings in, because this is where you guys listed bids, CDWG was a company that we've worked with, they actually did come in at the lowest rate regardless, so we did the bidding, and they came back in the way that, one, we're familiar with, which is helpful, but two, they came back with the best pricing too.
They do the government bidding, so it makes it really easy to work with them because they have to be.
It's a standard pricing, almost like the school buses, there's no flex, flexibility in that.
Amy actually wouldn't have to go out to other, you know, organizations to bid that out, kind of like our buses, but I think it's always nice to do that, to keep them on their toes as well.
Earthbend is a new vendor for us, but they do, they subcontract with a state contractor, Allstate, they're in a subcontract that should provide the labor. Earthbend provides the products. We were fortunate, this is a very, very reputable company, they do Fairview Hospitals up in the cities, they're their cabling company, along with they've done Minneapolis Convention Center. And I spoke personally with New Prague's technology director because they use or use as Earthbend and Allstate all the time, so I did a little, like, work on that, because when they came in at that price, that was super exciting, because we thought, we honestly And I spoke personally with New Prague's technology director, because they use or use as Earthbend and Allstate all the time. So I did a little like work on that, because when they came in at that price, um, that was super exciting. Cause we thought, we, we honestly thought this was gonna be probably about a hundred thousand dollars. But we got really lucky and found out there is an interduct between this building and that building. Where all we have to do is run cable between, that interduct between the buildings. That would have easily tacked on another fifty, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, had to dig all of that up, so, so that was really awesome, and, yeah.
So this is cabling just for access points, is that what it is?
Yeah, so the current wifi that we're running off of, the wire beat, is from nineteen ninety-seven, before wifi even existed. And it's pretty much what's gonna happen in about twenty twenty, and there's, and it's not like a finite date. Cause a lot of that will go unsupported. And so, we're basically at the mercy of updates, is what happens. And we will have, some of our current access points just won't work any longer. So that, on top of the wiring, which is twenty years, twenty years old, um, just been recommended through Aaron with WTEC. That if, this is a really, really good time to do it. Plus with the E-rate rebate, it's that, when you talk about bang for buck, we're getting good bang for buck for this project.
The access points are, cause we have dead spots still as well, we'll get rid of those. But if I'm not mistaken, when we did the addition, we never replaced any of the wiring for the internet, did we? In the building, so.
No, we did not.
This is a part of that, which probably could have or should have been done when we were doing the building, but never was done.
So is this fibered to put in that? No, one's saying yes, one's saying no.
Oh, no cat, no cat.
It's cat five.
Cat five.
Or cat six.
Why would you want a fiber?
This is, this is just, um, a wire, just one wire basically per access point that is not currently there. What we have right now is, um, instead of wiring for the access points that we planned three years ago. We bought a, a mini switch and then ran a cable from the mini switch at our existing location on the wall up into the ceiling. Those mini switches add a level of complexity and a level of failure that, that we just can't have going forward, so. And, and our current, our current system is all cat five. It's, every wiring closet has fiber in between them, which is the important backbone piece. But everything from there to phone, to a computer drop, or to an access point will be, will be cat five.
So why, why would we ask about running fiber from here to the elementary?
There is. Yeah, yeah, and in fact, in, at the elementary school in this building though, there is fiber between the wiring closets. So our, so our backbone, when we, when we did our, when we put our Rocky access points in three or four years ago. That was, or when, I guess it was when we, we joined WTEC, that was one of the upgrades there. Cause they upgraded the switches, they upgraded that backbone piece.
We got to, because the server was now gonna be offsite.
And as I listened to the start, when you said cat, I'm in my mind wondering why we're running cat from here to there, but if it's already fibered, we don't have that issue.
Right, this, this is just from wiring closet in classrooms. So, and, and for some classrooms, that, I guess it's an upgrade, because we've got that mini switch into the ceiling. But there are a lot of, there's a lot of new wire that we run too.
If you came into some classrooms, and even the labs in particular, there's wires all over the place. And pretty much what we've been told is it's gonna, a phone is gonna be plugged in from now on to the wall. And that's pretty much it, everything else is going wireless. The only other cabling you might see is just the cabling to have is a potential hookup between a laptop and a, and a TV. Just to ensure that those two could connect and talk to one another. So it's gonna clean things up quite a bit. We, computer labs, we never put access points in computer labs. Everybody was cabled in to, to a device, so we're moving all wireless, pretty much.
And the biggest thing to keep in mind is this is continuing to stay in that budget that you've approved. This isn't going above, it is simply above five thousand dollars, and we bring it to the board because of that. Plus it's really good for you to understand what's going on. This is one of those things you should stay in tune with, but this isn't an expenditure that's going over what you had planned on spending. It is within her budget. What's that?
It's under the budget for that project. Which we like.
We like.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, don't hurt.
I'll second.
Katie made the motion, Kurt made the second to approve the tech wiring project for fiscal year eighteen. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Um, can we jump back now to our scheduled presenter, Jake, on the facility rental procedures and guidelines?
Jake, do you wanna boot me on it, or do you wanna be on it?
Uh, you can have it up to them, if they need to pull that up yet. So I hope you had a chance to look at the facility policy. It might be something that you haven't seen in quite some time, uh, maybe some of you have never seen. Like I said in my email, and I did think I was gonna be here, that Anthony Flones and I made that probably about two thousand nine, two thousand ten, something like that. When he, his position was a point five facility scheduler. So, this is what I do when I, this is what I go by when I, um, schedule the facilities and how we charge people and stuff like that. Like I said, it probably hasn't been updated since two thousand ten, and it's worth looking at for sure. It's good for me to go through one more time and, uh, kind of refresh myself on some stuff. I did do a little bit of a comparison on what we charge. Our most common users, which is kind of our community, youth groups, um, you know, local, local groups, the people that are using our facility most often. And, um, you see there's different classifications. Their classification one is like our school program, we don't charge them anything. Classification two is the most common, almost always what we do. We don't have really any long-term rentals, we don't really have any other schools from other communities coming to use our auditorium or anything like that. So that's, that's our schedule there, and I will see if I can get mine to come up there now too. Where I did a comparison, and I think this was in your email. It's working. Trying to work. Anyways, maybe you didn't get a chance to check your email, but I did do a comparison, a side-by-side comparison of a bunch of, um, schools in the area or in the HRL that at least have similar facilities to us. Gym space, auditorium, cafeteria and stuff like that. I'm sorry, I'm having technical problems here, I think I need to restart my computer. But, um, if you get a chance to look in your email, we're, some schools are pretty similar on what we're charging people. Some were a little bit behind, some were a little bit more of. So I don't think we're, we're too far off on it, but it probably is something that's worth looking at. One thing that we do differently, I think, than other schools do is that we, for our, um, youth athletic groups, we kind of do a tiered scale for them. And, uh, so for our first, um, five events, we charge four dollars an hour. So we give them a price break, and then the more they do, the more we charge them. So then their next five is six dollars an hour, and then everything after that is eight dollars an hour. And like youth athletics and jail volleyball are by, I shouldn't say by far, but are, are biggest rent users. So we don't have, you know, we have Triple S Dance that comes, this is our third year of doing it, that's a good, um, moneymaker for us. And so, um, that's a little bit of an update on, I, you know, there's not a lot to present besides that, here's our policy and here's what we're doing. And, um, this is what kind of other people are doing. I'm really sorry that my computer's not working, but, uh, if you get a chance to check your email.
What you're saying a year is the, uh, what do we bring in in revenue?
You know, I wish I had a cha- I meant to do that, I had a chance.
I did add it up, you know, it's, it's not as much as you think. It's only about five to fifty-five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes we're nice to people, let them use a microphone, those kinds of things where, you know, our policy says we should be charging ten. You know, we could be getting a little tougher maybe on some of those things. Uh, the one thing we have really improved on, and this is Jake again doing a great job, is our custodial fees. I think you have nailed that down, where we know Community Ed was charged this, the activity was charged this. Before, we were just paying custodians and, and not really categorizing them. Jake has a really good system with Kathy Holm now, and it works really, really well. So I would challenge you in the next year to take that one step further and really start itemizing everything, um, that they may use for that organization. You know, Nora's brought groups in here before, they're nonprofit, so we're not gonna charge them. But we might wanna start thinking about those kinds of odds and ends and see if we can even, you know, get it from five thousand to seven thousand and, and keep increasing that.
We used to have some groups like, uh, True North Church, is either elementary or... That was for a long time, and they've been out for probably four or five years now. So we really don't have those long-term contracts that we used to have.
Do you have any, um, practical ideas, that you're in the pits every day on this kind of stuff, that boy, I wish that policy would change and we should be able to do this instead? Or this group should be in three instead of two?
No, I think we kind of did that with the, with the youth athletics, cause we wanted, we, those youth athletic groups, it hasn't been as much lately, but we really didn't want to nickel and demick. Cause we made this policy, it was the first time we charged rent for them. There's a little bit of pushback from them when we first do it, did it. We didn't wanna charge them too much. They have, they have given back, um, sometime, you know, from time to time, they give back to the school. They, uh, at the community center, they bought the scoreboard that's down there. Actually just talked to the guy who was running the softball this summer, and he, and he said, hey, if you guys need something, let me know. I talked to the president of CFYA, he, over the winter, he kind of said the same thing, we'll look at, see if we can maybe help do an upgrade for you or something like that, so.
This is our policy and it's also our facility, would there be any reason why those two reps couldn't sit down and talk to you about this a little bit?
That's sort of kind of what I was thinking with this, we had presented here for you tonight, and then you could take this data. And here at our next facility meeting, we could talk about what we think is, um, appropriate to charge and what to tweak and...
Yeah, I think policy as well.
Uh, policy, sure, yeah. Yeah, there, there are some things that, um, so we use a program, it, it works really, it's pretty time consuming, but we have a program, our facility scheduling program works with our activity scheduling, which I schedule all our games. When I schedule a game, it automatically writes to the facility scheduler and stuff like that. And we have a couple of like add-on policies that we should probably include for people, such as like our concession policy, uh, things like, things you can't come, bring into the building, like obviously weapons and balloons. We don't let balloons into the building, can't bring your own food in and stuff like that. So we gotta find a way to make our program work where we can attach those things. So when we send it out to a group who's renting it, they, they have all the stuff right there, they can't say, I didn't know we couldn't bring balloons in. You know, from a kid's birthday party or something like that, so, we're working on some things with it still.
So with, within this, is, where would like, something like the Shepherd Center fall in on this?
Shepherd Center would be a, a class two. Although we've worked with them, like they're, they're spaced down in the, I'd say class two, but we've also kind of worked them into a category four there, with kind of a long-term contract. But we, you know, as a, kind of, they're being a service group, uh, we don't really charge them what we've charged some other long-term contracts.
Then, then my other question would be, and we've talked about this before, so is this charge above and beyond what's gonna cost to cover custodial staff?
So this is rental, um, then we charge custodial staff, site manager, sound and lights on top of it, yeah. That's sometimes hard to do, cause it wasn't, like sometimes I'll, some events I, I book, um, a year ahead of time. I'm looking at booking something for next April already, somebody's been checking out the facility. It's really hard to tie down how much custodial time we're gonna need, when I don't have any idea, it's, you know, it's a Bluebird Festival. I don't have any idea what they're gonna need for custodial setup, and they need to know what their price is, and it's a, it's a year out, and I send it to them, and, you know, so, that, that's difficult to do. And we can adjust it as we get closer, but, you know, we try to do our best to give them a good idea of what it's gonna cost.
Right.
I thought we had a conversation about that a while ago, and I thought it was, what you were gonna try and do is say it's, this is what it's gonna cost per hour, and really we won't know until you're done.
Yeah.
But this is our hourly rate.
They do see that on their permit when I send it. It's just, you know, I might put, I'll do my best guess, you know, if it's a youth basketball tournament, it's gonna take ten hours of custodial time, times their hourly rate. And it's all itemized, they can see it.
Jake, what I think you should do too is email them a sample of invoices.
Yeah.
They're really well done, and you've never seen a copy of one, and you can see how he lists it, this, you know, and there's always this disclaimer under it. I was surprised when I saw your invoices, how well done they were. Like I, I kind of knew what I was getting, this was an attachment, but they knew what their bill was probably gonna be.
Yeah, we should, I, I would have walked you through how I would have scheduled sometimes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, but it's not, it's, my computer's needs to restart it, so, um, yeah. Yeah, I could have shown you everything, how I did, how I do everything, how, how you change. Somebody said, somebody calls you that day, says, hey, we're not gonna come in until five-thirty instead of five o'clock, so maybe just click, 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 save, you know? It's pretty time consuming, but it's a good program, but it is very time consuming.
Well, we don't, I was just wondering real quick, just for like the Community Ed programs, is just the one-time fee? Jake could say it lasts for five, six weeks, just the one-time fee.
Any Community Ed thing falls under category one, so we don't know. So if they run it through us, if they run like a camp through us, um, we just tack on our fee, register, basically a registration fee, and they don't charge anything, we don't charge them anything on the facility then.
Since it's run through us. Lighting, heat, anything.
Because they're already paying us.
They're already paying, okay, gotcha.
Participant, isn't it six dollars per participant?
Yep.
So we're already getting our fee for community.
Gotcha.
But we don't have any, we, that's actually a double payment to reserve anything, correct? No. So what if we have, uh, uh, one of, one of the areas in the building that somebody's looking to rent, and they back out in twenty-four hours? Where in the meantime, we've had a couple other groups inquire about that same space, is there any...
Cancelation clause.
Yeah. You know?
No.
I, I personally think that should be built in there. I don't know how often it happens, or if it's ever happened.
I don't think it does, that's probably a good thing to have in there, cause that's a lot, it's a lot of courting.
Right.
Triple S is this weekend between.
Well, then at least you get paid for your time that you've already put in, you know what I mean?
Yeah, working with, uh, Dave and his group, uh, plus our sound and lights person, it's a lot of courting.
And again, I'll go back to my conversation from a few months back. If we're not making, at least breaking even on our usage?
Yeah.
Is it worth it for us, cause none of the money should come out of the general fund for the school? It needs to be at least a minimum break point, or a break-even point. Actually, and a lot of the groups, we should maybe make some kind of profit out of it.
Well, if it's a school, like a school-related organization, like athletics or, and it's a tournament, and there are hundreds of people coming, using the facilities, and how do we charge for that? What class is that?
If, if we're hosting something?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't charge, if we host an event, um, so the general fund eats that custodial cost and the, you know, the cleanup and the heating and, um, all the utilities and stuff like that.
But we make the door, I mean the gate is all part of it then.
Correct, yeah. Either the gate, or we charge an entry fee, and we make sure that entry fee covers all our expenses on that, so.
Again, I think it would be nice if policy and facility got together and just stamped this, then at least we'd see we have an update from two thousand and eight. If we could do that, and they could bring back any changes or suggestions, uh, that would be Jerry and Rob, right? If you could coordinate that, that would be great. All right. That was a discussion presentation, so we'll move to item seven, discussion on usage, I wrote. Kurt?
Yeah, no, I just thought, when, um, at the last meeting, when Beth, uh, gave her presentation, we started talking about it a little bit, but I don't think we had a lot of resolve as to where to go with it. And I thought with her coming in and putting in the effort, that we could just follow up with a little bit more, so there's some, some direction there.
I guess I'm a little bit confusing that, because she made her pitch that we weren't allowing any hardball uses in the facility. And that's not the case, or in the gym.
No, my, my question is, is there, in listening to it, is there a way we can make it so it's, um, you know, there was, there's things where the girls were practicing in the morning, the guys were practicing in the evening. And it's like, okay, well, can we address this, can we look at this problem differently, or how can we look at it? And maybe we can, uh, look at it differently, so maybe there is a way of, one, looking at the facilities and making that more user-friendly. Or even it's like, okay, how do we make decisions of who plays in the morning, who plays in the evening, that sort of thing as well?
Do you wanna take this, or do you want me to? Well, just about who's in the morning, we did, I did say that we'll have to make it even. I didn't, you know, I obviously did, did not dictate that girls have to go in the morning softball. I set the score of three, two-hour time slots, a three o'clock, a five o'clock, and a seven o'clock. And, um, both track and softball said, if we're not at three o'clock, we'd rather just go in the morning. So they elected to do that, but going forward, if we're not gonna be able to use the gym, we do have to work something out, cause it's not gonna be healthy for those programs for practicing in the six o'clock in the morning.
Isn't the biggest solution just to put up the cage and the nets? Isn't the problem completely solved by doing that?
No.
We, well, let me, I went and looked at them, and I think when we talked about pulling those nets in the field house anyways, you know how we're not, we weren't even gonna fix those nets, is that right? Seems like a lot of things could be solved if we did move those nets back into where they need to be strategically. I know that there's some issues with the cost, but they're in there for a reason, and it does stop the balls, and this is in the field house, it does stop the balls from hitting the bleachers. It does, you can be in any surrounded, and you can do whatever you want in there. And then gym, that, that's a tougher situation. Wondering if there's a way that, you know, if it comes down to it, if, a lot of it comes down to supervision, I mean, there, there really shouldn't be any cross, throwing across in, in the direction of the bleachers, obviously. But I don't know if you can control that, so, um, one thing I was thinking, and it could be totally off, off course here, but if there aren't any curtains that we're using in the field house, could you move those into the gym? And just have that long, uh, run some long curtains lengthwise so they don't hit those as well? I don't know, it's just, you know, you'd probably know more about it, Jared, but it's like, can we make it work somehow? Because we got these facilities that in the spring, we can't be outside, how can we make it work? You know, and I think we just kinda, you know, that's it, we can't do it, but maybe there's a way of working around this, though.
Well, so you're clear? The only, the issue with hardballs is in the main gym.
Yeah.
Right? They still can use a hardball in the field house.
Yeah.
And we believe we have a solution, right Jake? They keeping that far back curtain down to keep the damage out the door. We don't, there's really not much damage at all on the bleachers in the field house.
They throw them long way.
They throw them long way, they're not throwing crossways, and they're, they got the, uh, bed and cage that they move up into the ceiling in the evening.
Yeah.
And just bring down, um, for practices, right?
You know, the, the comparison was made that we're somehow restricting these sports, and the comparison was made to Zambroda, who I don't think has a field house. We have more facilities than some of these, some of these people, so I don't think there's, there could be much restriction, much difference. I don't know what your, uh, what your people down in Zambroda do, Jake, as far as scheduling, cause they, they don't have as much facilities as we do.
No, and I guess just like back in, before we had that field house, we found a way to make it work, and, um, we could certainly do that. I agree that I don't, I certainly do not, even though they elect to go in the morning, I don't like that because it's... I don't like that because it's, it looks bad and it's not good long-term for the program. There's going to be girls that don't want to practice at 6 o'clock in the morning, and, you know, some of those other issues that Beth Sunquist brought up as well, so. And we did talk about putting up a curtain too to protect those bleachers, and I think Dave ballparked some numbers, and it was pretty expensive, but it would be a solution, probably. The problem, the problem in the, in the gym is that you almost have to throw towards the bleachers, because there's just not enough space going the long way.
You couldn't take one of those curtains out of the fieldhouse, or two of them out of the fieldhouse, and it wouldn't be usable, I mean, is that something to look at?
Just to fix them without even moving them?
Yeah.
Was it 20,000, Jake?
I don't remember, I know it was...
It was around that.
Yeah, I know it's crazy.
I guess I can't remember, but what was it that was going to cost 20,000 to fix them?
It was the motor and the way they moved them.
The tracks, the track, when you break in and...
The nets are fine.
Of the track that were falling down in the fieldhouse.
The caravans were falling down. Oh, how'd that?
I don't know, but I witnessed it once, and it was a little scary. Dave and I talked about that two years ago, about possibly moving curtains in to go in front of the bleachers, and again, it's, you know, you make anything work.
You'd use it for gym class too. I mean, I think a lot of the damage is coming from gym class as well. I mean, they play the balls in there as well, and that's what they're supposed to be doing, but, you know, there's, there's damage that can be happening.
Well, and it's happened over a long period of time.
Yeah.
This is not a new problem. This, you know, this has been going on for quite a while, so.
Is this resolved now at this time of year, or has it continued to happen for rain days or something? Or not really?
Right now, we've kind of always had this system, when there is a rain day, it's, we kind of have a rotation. Last week, baseball had the 3:00 time slot if there's a rain, a rain day. Softball had the next time, track had the next time. Those coaches work it out most of the time, not always, but it's most of the time it's the varsity teams only. Sometimes one of the junior high teams will scoot down to the community center or something like that and use that, but, well, it's something we'll just have to work out next year. Obviously, it created some issue this year, and I don't, I wish we could use it, to be honest with you, but, because, you know, we've done it that way forever, and I think that if we have the space, let's use it, but, you know, if it's, if we, if we can't use it, we'll figure it out.
Yes, I went out and looked as well, and I thought, and I was talking to some of the custodians, we banned hardball period in the building like four years ago, three years ago.
It was the year Dave started.
Right, that they were banned everywhere inside because of the short period of time, but now we're using them back in the fieldhouse, so that came back, it sounds like.
I don't think, oh, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. I don't think it ever fully was put into place, because male coaches were aware of that. I wasn't aware of that either. About the fieldhouse, the gym, yes, but not the fieldhouse.
Even the custodian was saying that, yeah, it was everywhere that they stopped, just the hardball use. And I think it was, for the short period of time, for the few practices, it was going to be stopped. I mean, I guess I'm looking at this going, okay, is it just, is it practices? Are the practices with a specific ball, with softball and baseball? Is there, we do have a ton of facility here, is there a cheap way that, I mean, are we talking a week worth of practice, or, you know, that, that this is all stemming from?
It's probably more like three weeks.
Three weeks?
Two or three.
And then we got...
At the very beginning of the season.
Then we got gym as well that could do damage, because, like, it's a combination of the hardball and just damage period.
Well, and what's funny, well, would, not funny, but what I don't agree with is, they do make baseballs, but they rubber coated them the same size and same weight as a regular baseball, but they're just not hard.
Right.
Same with the softball, but they just refuse to use it in the main gym. There's no reason that they couldn't use, utilize that space for some of their practice with the, without using the hard, hardball, but that just, to them, doesn't even seem to be an option.
But it's weighted the same?
Yeah, it's all, it's all weighted the same, same, right, Jake?
You just, your finger's going to be different when you can...
A little, because there's not the real true threads.
Right.
But that's why you're really not going to be pitching in there.
Or you can choose not to pitch that day.
Right.
Pitch in a cage.
Move the pitchers over into the...
Into the fieldhouse.
Fieldhouse and pitch.
Would that still cause damage, do you think, to the bleachers?
Not, that was, that was the case when I was around here going to school. That was the only thing that was ever allowed inside. We never touched hardball until we went outside. I don't know what year it changed, but the hardballs were able to use in high school, probably 20 years ago. I've been gone for 30, I guess, but that was never...
I, I used hardballs in the gym to pitch.
Also, it would have been shortly after...
Yep, it was been mid-'80s.
Is that an option?
They don't seem to like that option, they don't use hardballs and...
But is that, is that something that we, for the protection of the school? It might be a good option for the district?
I think, I think we should ask these coaches to come in, or else give us their opinion on why it wouldn't work. We need to share, share that perspective before we jump into anything and say, let's not do it this way. They definitely had ideas, you know, about it, so Jake can attest to that, I guess, so. I just wonder if they would give us some rationale, they can email you, and you can forward it on or whatever, so we understand what's going on, yeah?
Sure.
So the solution in the short term, so we were able to use hardballs in the facility before they got outside, was Jake set two-hour slots for softball, baseball, and track. So the ones that use the hardball have an evening spot or an afternoon spot in the fieldhouse where they can use a hardball. So all the talk that they're not allowed to use, I don't know where all that came from other than, like, checking with Jake or Dave, but the key, the reality is, there is hardball use in school in the spring before they go outside, and it's utilized in the fieldhouse, and each, each group that uses that gets a space, a time slot that Jake has set up for them. If they choose to go in the morning or choose to go late at night, that's a choice by the coach or that team.
So is the problem then more of the scheduling of the two-hour time slot?
Well, can more than one team practice in the fieldhouse at the same time?
Well, a little bit, because track does overlap a little bit.
The way we currently have done it, when we've been able to use the high school gym, and softball takes high school gym, boys and girls track, and one of the seventh or eighth-grade baseball teams takes the fieldhouse, and so three teams actually share it. So that's the way we've worked it out in the past, and then we just, you know, schedule everybody from there. But softball was not able to go in. I think one of the issues that, what Beth this year, what her problem was, is that softball's going in the morning, now that's their solution. You know, they get an hour and a half, hour and a half practice, when instead they could be getting at least two hours. Baseball's taking a three-hour practice. They're in the morning, girls don't like that, they're getting up at, you know, 5:30 just to get here for a 6:00 practice. I think that's kind of what the issue was there. But, and with that, saying, hey, we have these spaces, let's use it, and let's, you know, prevent these issues from happening by using the space that we have.
But again, the original setup was, they had a time slot in the afternoon that they could have used it, correct?
Yep.
And they just chose that too.
They chose not to. Track said, track said the same thing, well, we, instead of using the track, we'll go in the gym instead. Of course, they were frustrated, they were frustrated.
I will tell you from a parent's point, my phone will start ringing when you've got kids our age that have to wait two hours after school to start practice. It's, it's really hard, because most of these kids don't drive. So a practice that starts at 5:00, it's just really hard for parents. So that's why they opt for the morning.
But it, yeah, I guess I can see that, but at the same time, I look at it as no different as youth sports when our kids come at 5:00.
I'm just, I...
Yeah, no, I hear you, I hear you.
Most kids aren't home by 5:00, it's really hard to get them here, so they end up waiting, and then Tim deals with...
Right, then you have the supervisor.
And they do, they wait till 5:00, so it is what it is.
Right, because they have to, probably.
Well, the good thing is, we've lived through the spring, and now we can take our time looking at this, and it really gained some perspective from coaches, I hope, as to why we're not seeing this total picture. I agree with Rob, there was a lot of conversation about hardball and restricting it or not having it at all, but I don't know where it went.
I thought for the short period of time that if they were going to be indoors, they would suspend the hardball use until they got out, but that was, I think, four years ago. I don't remember that.
Even a year ago, now Jake was in on the conversation about not allowing the hardballs in the gymnasium. How I know that lasted was probably a week, and then it was back to hardballs again.
Still seeing damage on that overhead door in the fieldhouse, you know?
Yeah.
Sure.
You know, so it's still a hardball in there a little bit too, but, we'll talk to the coaches and see what they have to say.
And, you know, it came up because with the new fieldhouse, not only the damage there, but when they're using that space on the track that they're utilizing for batting, in the batting cage, there is never anything covering the floor.
Right.
It's a brand-new floor, N09 floor, so it's still, for the age that that floor should last, it's still a new floor, but we're speeding up the process of a bad floor excessively by allowing that to happen, and that the solution now has been, they do have the cupboard, I don't know, for the first 15 feet.
There was a conversation about that, and we talked about it probably two years ago, maybe a little longer.
You and I did.
Yeah, and they said that it doesn't cause any damage to the floor, but I'm not, I don't know.
Well, you can clearly see when you stand on the track that there's damage to the floor.
Right, exactly, yeah, so.
And, and again, that's, that's my theory, you know, you build a facility, and it's, it's great, and I want it to be used, but they, they have to have some responsibility on the amount of damage that is occurring, and take precautions to, to prevent that from happening. Who's going to pay for it, instead of being 20 years out, 10 years, because it's so tore up from... Where's the money going to come from, because there is no money? And that's been my concern from the day they started talking about building onto the school.
But the floors actually...
In the ad hoc meeting.
The floor is expensive.
Yeah, right. And they're sure what we have, it's a great space, and it can be utilized, but take a few precautions to protect what you're, you know...
They say those floors are good for about 10 to 15 years.
Yeah.
Well, O7.
I just think we should convene the extracurricular facility, but that would be Jerry and Jerry coupled on that other meeting.
Most couple more meetings.
Yeah. Again, we just need to have conversation with people and see what's, how we can move this forward, I guess. Good discussion.
Thanks for entertaining.
Yep. Okay. I think we are finished with everything on informational meetings coming up. May 8th is our next meeting, and you see the items we have on here.
Those are going to be changed a lot too. Jennifer Chapey is right in the middle of testing, that was my fault completely, we'll move her to June, but on May 8th, you will hear from, oh, Lori, help my memory.
We're going to invite the foundation to come and talk about their auction, and...
And then the John Hubert, Hobert.
And John Hobert. For the CCC.
The CCC stuff.
And Ann Davison's class.
And one of the... Flexible learning environment.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
Because I want her to let the board know how big part of the impact from that foundation has had, and where her room setup, which probably none of us are familiar with.
I've actually been in her room.
So she's got a story that goes along with it?
Before, before.
And how it all, now all came about to be to where it is today? So I'd like her to come and tell her 10-minute story.
I think she's got a couple of kids that wrote it too. The plan being that we're getting that all organized, but that'll be on the 8th. It definitely won't be Jennifer Chapey, she called me and was like, I'm in the middle of testing. So we have some different, one visit and then two presentations. The proposed budget, I'm working with the principals right now, one thing you'll see is a change. We are going to give each of them the $10,000 to work on capital money. We have taken that away for so many years that they need desks and chairs and things like that, so we are working on replacing a classroom at a time. This kind of goes along with what the Ed Foundation has kicked off, so you'll see the proposed budget coming up too, already.
Another busy meeting?
It is, it's going to be a very busy meeting.
Just before we close, me and Nora went to the Jazz Festival last night, didn't we?
Yeah.
And it was, it was exceptional, I think, unless we, we send accolades to our, our music people, Sue Frankie and our band director, Led Bull and Peter, we'd be remiss, that was, it was just great. And I, there's a certain informality to it, when they're looking for a bill and they can't find it, or there's short, there are sorts of personnel, and we find he's out in the, out in the parking lot assisting a lady who had won a prize, and we're all waiting, and, but it just added to the charm of the evening, and they should be acknowledged, I guess, it was a good time. How many people, Nora, would you guess?
Oh, my gosh, I'd say, I don't know, 80, 20?
I was going to guess in excess of 100, but it was still fun, and, you know, it's a, it's a parent and grandparent evening to stick their chest out and enjoy, and when you, you know who's related to who is when all of a sudden the phones and the camera up, and they're watching. So congratulations to them, I just wanted to acknowledge that. So I think we're in the mood to adjourn.
Can I have a congratulations of?
Yes.
Our speech team, for the second year in a row, back as state champions in speech.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all those students, and... For all their hard work.
And we will get our FFA results tomorrow, and we're anticipating some good things there too, I would anticipate. I think we're going to have some big things. If we find out, we'll send it out to the group. They went today, but you don't get results till tomorrow, so.
If you follow me on Twitter, @CFHS.
He's doing so great now.
Derek, do you have a Twitter account by chance?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I do. If you'd like to follow me, it's derekbell20, I've got Twitter, yeah.
How many, how many classes are there in speech? Is there two?
There are two, and, you know, we had 16 students go to state. I think Cal said we had, oh, what's the number, eight make finals? And we had six replace.
And, and that's 13 categories, so just think how monumental that is. 13 categories, and we have six state champions.
Miranda, we got second in, I don't remember what she switched to this year.
Discussion.
Discussion. Grant and his brother Ryan got second and third in extemporaneous speaking, and we had some, it was a great year. You know, it was, again, kudos to them, to the number of people, number of kids they've got, and to the quality that they, that they bring, it's just phenomenal.
Was this Saturday?
This was Saturday.
Great. That's just incredible, these kids rush back home, and then they get into their jazz routine.
Yep. Well, then they went to robotics Saturday night.